All right, we are all back. And we'll now move on to capital.
I wonder if this can respond to my question.
Except for the break we had, we would have been right on schedule, so that is good.
I can take this one?
Yep, Jim, yes, that would be great.
Okay, so the back section of the handout, page six discusses the capital review. And for council's consideration, which was sent out, it discusses the schedule of capital balances. It shows you how much we have in general capital improvement fund and what we're hoping to appropriate in the budget this year. Water capital and the same, what we're hoping to appropriate, electric capital, we're hoping to appropriate, and fund balance, and what was used out of fund balance this year in the budget to fund capital. And that's on page seven. And page eight has the items that are appropriated already. And I think it's fair to say at $2 million with Sampson Avenue, Rosedale, all this sanitary sewer improvements that we have to the Force Main, to the pump station, to Treadwell, to North Street, and the utility truck procurement purchase, and the water repairs that David talked about, and the signal at Central Avenue, that we have over $2 million in already appropriated capital items. And that's a hearty capital budget to begin with. However, we feel as though we're not done yet, and we can have more projects funded this year for your consideration. On page nine and 10 is a list of all of the capital projects pared down that were presented to Ray and I from the various departments. And we review them, discuss the feasibility of completing them. For example, I know we're having a conversation with Austria and others that we've got plenty of road projects, there's just no way we could turn around and do five more road projects this year. So it's obvious that even though it's listed on here, it's listed as something we need to take care of, but not necessarily something we could do this year. But it's important for council to see the various projects that are in the queue, so to say. And I'll also say this, and circling back to the conversation with Pat Rowe earlier, our goal over the summer is to have a comprehensive five-year capital review, another one. We'll work with Bob Vogel's department and pull that together. So with that, on page 11, I apologize, I think I went one page too far. On page 11 shows the water capital and electric capital project requests. And then page 12 shows what administration, what Ray and I think is appropriate along with working with the department heads as items to consider for appropriation for this year for general capital. And when I say appropriation, it's not probably a correct term for budgeting, because obviously every one of these items comes to council via ordinance for appropriation later on in the year. And items can change in the capital budget, as was the case last year and in previous years. The recommended general capital budget that we have is $923,500, and that is close to the total amount of general capital that we have available. If you look on page 12, you'll see it's $1,078,000 that we have in available general capital dollars. With that, Mayor, I think it's probably appropriate to have the individual department heads, starting with Bob Vogel, come up and talk about his ask, and talk about what ultimately is on this recommended list.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Jim, did you want to go over the status of the current projects that have already been appropriated?
Yes.
Can we do that first?
Yeah, let me see what page that's on. And as you do that, Bob, addressing a question that Austria had put in advance is make sure you talk about the fact that with the ones that have already been appropriated from 2012 or previous years, and what's on the docket for this year, that we have the resources to deliver it, so we're not raising expectations.
Sure, we'll do. We'll save the resources issue, since we've already committed to the projects that have been appropriated, and we have to provide those resources.
Right.
We'll save the resources issue for the request for 2013. So, yeah, on page eight, we have a nice rundown of the existing ordinances that started off in 2012, or the latter part of 2012, and will continue in performance through calendar year 2013. The first such project is the Sampson Avenue project, which comes from ordinance 21-12. Sampson Avenue was bid in the fall, late fall, and awarded to Cepelli and Sons, I believe it was in January. And Cepelli has indicated to us, they've signed all the contracts, gotten the paperwork back and forth to us, and they've indicated to us that they could start work in late March. And so that Sampson Avenue project, I believe, is a six weeks long construction project. And we hope that that sidewalk and the Millen overlay project can certainly be completed within that timeframe. So in terms of wrapping up a 2012 project and 2013, early spring for Sampson Avenue looks feasible. We also have money to recoup from the federal government on that, which is a matching fund, which we got through grants process on the Saferidge to school. And we'll be doing that late spring, early summer, and hoping to get the federal government all the paperwork that they need to demonstrate that we actually did the project in accordance with their rules and regulations, which can be a challenge at times. But mostly for the federal aid perspective, I think the local aid monies are a little bit easier to have credited into our accounts in relatively short order. In any case, Sampson Avenue, any questions about that as far as the project's concerned? No? Good. Yeah, we've had several informal public hearings with that, as well as several project preparation public hearings, and so it's been pretty well covered on the public end. And I think everybody's eagerly awaiting seeing that project completed, so good news. A second one on that list is Rosedale Avenue. Rosedale is through capital ordinance 38-2012. Rosedale Avenue was bid early spring. We did the appropriation, I believe it was November. No, it's actually in December we did the appropriation. But we've gone through the bid process in January and February, and again, received bids from a number of qualified contractors a week ago. And you will see on your March 11 agenda, a proposal for a recommended award on the Rosedale Avenue construction project. And while I won't call out the contractor, I will say that most of the contractors that showed up at the bid look to be very reputable contractors. And so I was very happy with the results of the bid process on Rosedale Avenue. So pending your agreement on March 11, we will immediately go to contract with the apparent low bidder on Rosedale Avenue and schedule therefore thereafter, within a month thereafter, a reasonable construction project schedule. My hope would be that the April, May, June timeframe, we will complete Rosedale Avenue. It's not a complicated project, but I would hope, again, to be 100% complete with Rosedale by the very start of summer, and immediately go and seek final payments from the state of New Jersey, because it was a municipal aid matched project as well to the tune of $140,000. So we'd like to get all that money back by June from the state, or at least apply for it.
How will that affect pool traffic? You know, the municipal pool is down there, summer months, you hope to be finished?
It's a good question. I do hope to be finished. I hope to be finished before summer starts, Austria.
Yeah, okay.
I don't have complete control over the contractor's schedule, because that's something, once we get into contract, we have to provide a certain amount of give and take with them on. But I'm going to be pushing it, and I'm hoping to get the entire project completed by the time the pool opens. That would be my goal.
You'd probably need a contingency.
Certainly, pre-construction meeting, that will be on the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
That'll be a fun pre-construction meeting. Aren't you guys done yet?
Bob, you talked about recouping money from grants. What is the total amount?
That we have for, that we anticipate for 2013? We have $140,000 to anticipate from Rosedale Avenue. We have $125,000 to anticipate from Sampson Avenue. We have two payments which should arrive from last year's projects in the next two weeks, three weeks, for Woodland Road, which are about $125,000 altogether. And certainly, the potential for the state to respond and commit to the Green Avenue funding is still there.
Right.
But we still don't, we don't have an answer from the state on Green Avenue yet.
Okay, so it looks like that we have $400,000 to be deposited into the borough now. Perhaps Robert can tell us exactly where would that money go?
That goes back into capital. And Robert, unless it's different, you know, yep. So the process we do, which is a safe and conservative process, is when we budget and appropriate, we appropriate 100% of the project cost. So we use all of our capital money, because we don't know whether it's a month, which never happens for reimbursement, or more likely a year, or it could sometimes even more. So as soon as that money comes back in, it's now back in the pot, available for another future project.
So the next category of projects that are carryovers are, is the sanitary sewers. North Street Force Main project is something that we started and funded back in 2010. Took a long time through outsourcing the design plans to various consultants to get the plans and the specifications pulled together so that we could get to bid and have the construction process begin. Finally, that work was completed in majority last year. There is a component of that work that remains for this year, which is essentially a maintenance improvement on the ten inch Force Main up through Fairview, which has been committed by the general contractor, and I was hoping it would be done by now. Still is not. Again, the emails that I get back and forth, and the telephone calls I get back and forth to the general contractor, it's Matina and Sons, very reputable company. But he says he has a sub that has been very difficult to get online and do that last $50,000 phase of work on the Force Main. And so he's somewhat constrained to get it done. And again, I think the time is, the time has come where we actually have to have a sit-down face to face and get all the people, all the players in the same room, and hopefully move that forward in very short order. Again, not a whole lot of work, I would say a week's worth of work when it comes right down to it in terms of general construction, but something that's been put off for the majority of the winter, and beginning to become a little bit impatient about that, because we'd like to have that ordinance closed out. The next one is the pump station itself. It's a, it's a capital ordinance 38-2010. This is a project that was bid and deserves to be rebid here this spring. However, there's various components of that general construction bid that was done back in 2010, which have been done in-house. So David Maines and some of his crew has helped. Certainly, we've dealt with Mike Piano on the Transformers on a couple of occasions for North Street Pump Station. There's various manageable components of the North Street Pump Station, which were included, and then that original general construction bid, which have now been done in-house, which is great news. It means there's no markup for a general contractor in the contract. It should make the job more affordable for us to complete. So in terms of getting the North Street Pump Station renovation bid on the street, again, we'd like to have it done this spring and complete those improvements before the end of 2013. The next item on the sanitary list is sanitary sewer list is Candlewood Pump Station. Candlewood, again, we've componentized, it's not something we've gone out for a general construction bid from a general contractor on. We've broken it down into component parts that have to be replaced. David's done a tremendous amount of work coordinating with outside vendors to get the generator up and online. David, I believe that's going online next week?
Yeah.
Yep. So we have a natural gas generator, fairly sizable, which David and his crew had poured the foundations for based on our specifications, and is going to be doing some additional work with the electric and generator manufacturer companies out there to get that thing online. But finally, and long overdue, I would say, that we have a automatic generator at the Candlewood Pump Station, which won't fail if the electricity fails. And those things are cycled once a month or once a week, and provide reports that you can, you can access to indicate, you know, the level of maintenance that would be required. So there's a lot of automation that's involved in some of those, some of those newer systems nowadays, which we'd like to do more work on in terms of replacing components at the pump stations. There's a lot of, I mean, there was discussions earlier about how we do a good job maintaining the infrastructure that we have. But the issue becomes one of asset management, and I absolutely agree with Ben's earlier comments about needing to know where potentially you have some big bills in the future. We do a great job maintaining our stuff, but we have some very old components in the system. And so as far as a risk-based approach to the problem, and I know Rob's been very involved in this too, with the five-year capital plan and the capital projects review committee, that's a very important component of what we do, and knowing where we are financially, and being able to move forward with asset management in the system. So all good news. Candlewood Pump Station has several other components which need to be awarded before the end of the year. We are working on those in terms of commuters, mixers, switches, various other components on the system. There was, obviously, Siemens had a odor controlled system that was put in towards the end of last year, so that'll be part of the project as well. But we are proceeding reasonably well, and I'm hoping that we can certainly encumber all the funds before the end of the year and have most of those projects on the way to completion in 2013. Last one is for sanitary sewers is the Treadwell Pump Station. Now, Treadwell, we had sent to a outside hired consultant for design work, that was CME Associates. CME has come back with preliminary design, and based on our comments, is trying to get final design for that project. As you'll see later in some of the budget presentations, they are looking for additional funds based on our inputs, because there are things about the wet well and a pump station building which they put into the contract, which really are more expensive than we have been led to believe. And so there's a, there's a budgetary issue there with Treadwell, depending on what components of that project we award. The base contract in terms of taking the, putting a generator, backup generator on it, and taking all the electric controls and bringing them above ground into a box and replacing the pumps, that's all taken care of under the existing budget. But there is a budgetary issue we may have to deal with with regards to putting a nice pump house enclosure on the Treadwell Pump Station before the year is out. In any case, CME has promised me the final design plans and specifications this month, and we hope to talk more about that with the Capital Projects Review Committee as the year goes by. Certainly, we will absolutely be able to bid and award a contract before the end of the year, and I believe we can finish Treadwell Pump Station improvements before the end of the year. So good news for all those. Next item, Harley-Dodge boiler replacement. This is something that's been discussed since the completion of the Harley-Dodge Memorial Building. I believe it's an existing capital account that we use for Harley-Dodge. Now, the boilers are complicated somewhat by asbestos replacement or asbestos disposal contract, which is not uncommon for projects like this in a building of this type. So we've had to bump up the allocation of costs accordingly. It's fully encompassed in the numbers you see here before you. And it is our hope that boiler contracts, I received the plans from an outside consultant on this project yesterday by email, and so they've been pushed to produce, and they have produced. And so now I have the plans that are required to bring the asbestos contractor online and finish up so that we can get this thing bid and awarded before summer. But that's going to be a little bit of a push at this stage of the game. But again, issues being, when you're dealing with an outside consultant, the coordination level increases a little bit, and sometimes slows down running out to, running out to a set of plans and specifications that you can go immediately to bid on. However, again, our hope is that the boilers will be replaced this summer within this building. The utility truck, I don't know what the schedule for that is. Dave, do you know? It's on order? Okay, so the utility truck is a $70,000 item under ordinance 40-2012. It's on order, so that'll be taken care of within a couple of months. Non-issue for me. Water emergency repairs, again, mostly a non-issue for me. I'm just working closely with David and Sal in terms of the punch list of items that need to be installed, procured and installed. Most of the first couple of months of this year, I've been dealing with purchasing issues with regards to getting multiple quotes for, for the work that we want to see done. But as David already covered in his discussion, I would say 75% of the work that we anticipated in those emergency repairs will be fully encumbered this month, and very likely, at least 50% of the work in that $150,000 will be complete this month. And so my projection is certainly by the end of the year, we'll be able to finish up the rest of those items. Next item, last item on the carryover projects is the central Fairview signal. We received quotes from Gen Electric last week on this item. You will see this as a potential contract award on March 11. I put in a agenda recommendation for that as well, and I believe Gen Electric will be able to complete that before the summer starts. So the central Fairview signal will also be completed in the first part of 2013. Any questions about any of those carryover projects? It's a fair amount. Gene?
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll go right to the general capital, what's the, turns out to be the recommended budget, just as we, two quick questions on the, what was requested budget, at least to make sure there's anything from the council. One with the roads, are those listed in priority order? This is on the request and not the recommended, so that means?
Yes, they are.
So those are, so we know when, as we move forward, most likely we'll tack them in that order.
That's correct.
The other is on page 10, there's boiler replacement for 350?
Yeah, we should not have, it's my fault to have the H and boiler replacement on page eight, because the contract hasn't been awarded yet. Everything else on page eight is contract.
All right.
So we're thinking it's 350 to 405. Bob just got the documents in the other day, so we're going to be refreshing that.
Same, but it's the same situation, you don't have to worry about that, so we do have that at least.
It's a non-budget issue, right.
And it's.
But it is a capital project.
Yep, all right. Any other questions on the requested before we get to the recommended? Gene, and then Rob.
Yeah, the, this is a general question. For item like the utility truck that was damaged in the storm, I'm assuming that we can recoup some dollars from insurance money?
That, I believe that is correct.
So when we.
Not much, because it was a tall truck.
Of course, of course. Whenever we recoup money from insurance companies, where do we deposit that money for vehicles and things like that?
Is that going to go back in capital, because that's where we spend it out of? There we go. Yes.
So that's only true for if the, if the vehicle, it's out of the capital. We have vehicles that are not coming out of the capital, and that will go to the municipal surplus, I assume?
It all depends on the transactions, they're all different, but yes.
But basically, the concept is, came out of operating, it goes to surplus.
Going back.
Came out of capital, goes to capital.
Okay. And also for the last item you have there, Bob, central Fairview signal?
Yep.
You're requesting additional dollars? Is that for the?
I slipped in an extra 10 there, Bob, for you, because after our conversation on Friday.
Good, no, that's, that's the right thing to do. No, Jim.
Is that additional, or is that the same item?
It would be an add on the contract. You'll see more detail on it on March 11. The reason for that is the type of signal replacement project that we are recommending at this stage of the game is slightly more involved than what was anticipated last year in terms of a budget item. And that includes a, a brand-new pole at the location instead of using it off the existing wires with the drop signal in the middle. So we have a pole and an arm, and that's where the extra money comes in. Also, there were a number of automatic transfer switch additions that were, actually, I think Bleep Darren had actually brought it up as an issue. Chief Datchison had indicated that all the signals were down during Sandy for an extended period of time. And if we had the automatic transfer switch electrical work done at those signals, we could easily bring a handheld generator in, because they don't consume a whole lot of power, and plug it directly into those signals and have working signals during, during, during an emergency. And I thought it was an excellent idea, and so we got quotes from Gen Electric to do just that, and that will be part of our recommendation on March 11 as well.
Okay, so for the central Fairview, it's additional dollars for the boiler, it's not, it's just one item?
That's correct.
Because they both listed twice.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Rob, and then Carmella.
So my question is on the water and electric capital. Should I ask now, or should I wait?
Just, we're pretty much on the recommended, if there's any questions on, not on recommended, but on the request, just clarifications on the request.
Well, it's on the recommended, it's on the next page.
So we'll be getting to that, yeah.
Okay, so I'll hold my question. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so I should hold my question for central Fairview signal as well? Okay.
All right, so we will now move to page 12, which is the, the actual recommended budget for, out of general capital.
Okay. So the Green Avenue project, you're all very familiar with. We've had multiple public hearings. We've approached the state once previously for funding. It was turned down by the state, I believe it was our third year of request, which is a minus point from their, on the state's evaluation criteria. And so now that is passed, we are not in a third year this time around, so I'm very hopeful about getting some state-matching grant funds for Green Avenue. The letters are due, if they follow last year's performance, on March 28, which would give us a month or so if we wanted to include it in this budget year, in this, this project year. I think we would take about a month to get the plans and specifications again approved from the state. We've already been through that process once with the last grant go-around, but we're going to do it again, and hopefully be in a position to bid and award a contract either the last meeting in April or the mid, the mid-meeting in May.
And just a quick question on that month. The month is all on the state, because we have the plans ready to go, so as soon as we get the letter, we're going to send them to Trenton, and they're going to get reviewed.
The DOT letter is the one that we're waiting for.
Okay, so.
Sure. That triggers a process with the state that we have to go through in order to award the contract.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we are ready, and it's, any, any waiting is.
Much as I'd like to award the contract the day after we get the letter from the state, they're going to make us go through a process in order to get the plans and specifications formally approved for that particular grant allocation, and that takes some time, too. So again, mid-May, good perspective on if we get the letters on time from the state, and I say on time, because it's, used to be six months ago, and now it's where it is in terms of the municipal aid letters going out. But all that aside, working with the state as much as we can, we should be able to get that project on the street in May. And that, that would be excellent for Green, because I know the residents there have been waiting a long time to see progress. The replacement of the Public Works roof, I believe we have bid documents out, so it is currently being bid. I've had a couple of contractors' calls at my desk, which I need to talk with David about after the meeting, but for the most part, I believe everything that needs to be done in order to get a agenda rec for the award of that roof replacement contract in late March is in place. And so we will proceed with that and hopefully get the roof done at the Public Works Garage over the summer. Again, that's part of the 2013 capital budget, so David has jumped out of the box and gotten that thing rolling in short order. So kudos to Dave. The other items in terms of fire police, it's probably better to have those gentlemen come up and speak about. I'm sure I can give them the general overview, but.
But chiefs want to come on up and just.
Breathing air compressor, chief, did you want to talk about that as far as your project request?
Yep, and Chief Datchison, you want to come up also, so you can quickly follow?
Good morning.
And library is in the hole.
Okay.
As opposed on deck.
My, my breathing air compressor. This is a compressor that we use to, it compresses air to refill our air cylinders that are on our SCBA's, self-contained breathing apparatus, when we go into fight a fire. The one we presently have was purchased in 1984. She's had a good run. It was in this building. We moved it over to the new facility when we moved, but I've had it rebuilt twice already over the years, and it's, it's come to the end of its life. The compressor compresses air up to 5,000 PSI, so it's, it's not like something you would see in a, you know, Tractor Supply or Home Depot type of compressor. It also has to compress it, and it meets a, what they call a grade. It also has to compress it and it meets a, uh, what they call a grade D air certification for breathing air. It can't have oil in it or it can only, can have certain amount of moisture in it and other particulates, so, um, it's what we use and we use it on a very regular basis because, uh, we are forbidden to breathe smoke, so that's what we use to keep that from happening. So, again, it's a capital item that, uh, needs to be replaced because if it fails, it just creates a lot of logistical challenges if I have to run around and get those cylinders filled up from neighboring departments, so, um, for that. The second one on my list is, uh, turnout gear. Um, we, we try to replace turnout gear on an annual basis in the capital budget because, uh, my turnout gear has a ten-year life limitation, which, uh, means we have to buy a lot all at one time or buy a little bit as we move along. I've had an influx of, uh, volunteers, so I have, uh, turnout gear to give to not only them, but to my, my seasoned guys usually get some newer stuff and then the, the new guys get the older stuff and then we just keep shuffling it through, so that's just to keep replacing it. And the third item on the list is, um, the FCC kinda threw us a huge curveball, maybe a knuckleball following it, uh, last year. Uh, there was this big thing about narrowbanding that was going out and, um, Chief, uh, Datchison and I thought, we, we dodged a huge bullet because back in ninety-five, we, we all, the both of our departments transferred to a new frequency in the T-band range and it was already narrowbanded when we transferred there. So we figured, you know, all our equipment, we had no modifications to do, uh, the ambulance squad just had theirs modified, uh, reprogrammed, but we really didn't have to do anything. And in the eleventh hour, the FCC said, um, in the frequency bandwidth that we're in, we're in a T-band range, which is in the four seventies, uh, we're gonna abolish that in twenty twenty-two. So in twenty twenty-two, you can no longer use those radio frequencies in the, um, emergency services spectrum. So, uh, they're gonna come out with a new spectrum, which is gonna require new equipment, and that's everything from the pagers we carry on our belts to the portables, to the mobiles, to the transmitters, to the receivers, to the voters. It's, if we have to replace everything, it's probably about a half a million dollar investment between both departments. So what this fifteen thousand dollars is for is to hire a consultant today to do a thorough research if there's any other available frequencies that we could use that are below the four seventy range, um, that we would, that, that would just require us to do reprogramming of our existing equipment versus throwing everything in the dumpster and buying all-new again in twenty twenty-two. So we're trying to be a little proactive and get out in front of everybody, uh, because there's gonna be other groups or agencies in the same boat, so that's what we're asking, uh, for that consultant to be hired to do. Similar to what we just did for, uh, the AM radio frequent, uh, to hire someone in that world to do it. There's a little more work because of the, the frequency spectrum we're looking to get into, which is kinda tight, but maybe with the narrowbanding, there'll be something opened up, so that's kind of a joint thing for the police department and the fire department. That's, that's pretty much it.
Any questions to Lou?
Uh, Lou, on your turnout gear, uh, how many would that encompass?
That's four.
Eleven, just four?
Four, and that's not the helmet, that's not the boots, that's not the gloves, it's not the, the hood, it's just the, uh, the coat and the bunker pants and the suspenders and the belt that goes with it.
So, so your new volunteers actually will need, because you have four new volunteers now?
Um, yeah, I've got four and I got two more in the queue right now, so...
Okay.
Um, they're coming in. I, we, we have older gear. It's, it's that, for structural firefighting, it has to be within that ten-year window.
Okay.
So I, I, the newer guys aren't going to do structural firefighting right away, so I give them some of the older stuff, but come the end of the year when they get their training, I've gotta give them something that, that works, so...
Okay.
And I've got guys that have gear that's coming up to that ten-year lifespan, too. Um, like I said, the, the option is, is you buy a whole bunch all at the same time and then in ten years, you gotta buy a whole bunch more and it's, and it's, you know, at about twenty-five hundred dollars a set, it's, it can be a big, big nut every ten years or so, and then you gotta filter it in in between, so we just kinda shuffle it around.
Okay.
And we maintain it, too. As it gets damaged, there's, the garments get sent out and get repaired, too, so we get the full, full run of it.
Jeannie?
Yeah, Lou, um, I know that you talked about the compressor for quite some time because that's a very old piece of equipment. Is that something, are we getting to the stage that it's really urgent for you to get it immediately now?
I would have to say yes.
Yeah.
I had it rebuilt, uh, the last time, about two years ago, and at that time, the, the company said, you know, if it, if this happens again, you're not gonna be able to, you know, re, redo it. Again, it's a, it's a three-stage compressor, it compresses up to five thousand PSI, so it works and works.
So it looks like that we really should give you an okay and you should just go ahead and, and, uh, if, if we're all okay that, to, to do that immediately before something, um, goes wrong?
Mm-hmm. That, that would work. I'd probably have to go out to bid because of the numbers on it, I don't think it's a state contract item.
Plus, you'd have to ordnance and so it's a...
Sure.
I'll work with, with Austria on that if we get it along.
Absolutely no problem. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Alright, thank you. Morning, Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Burnett. I would kindly request the following items for the Madison Police Department two thirteen, two thousand thirteen capital budget. Over the past several years, our John Avenue impound facility has become, uh, in disrepair. Um, there have been roof leaks, animal infiltration, building decay, which has resulted in a moisture and a mold issue on the exterior and the interior of the building. Now, this impound area is technically an outside, uh, evidence area, okay, and it needs to be secured in such a manner. Um, in the past several weeks, we start to, we started to remediate some of the issues by removing up to fourteen surplus cars that have been stored, uh, in that area. We started clearing a lot of vegetation and other debris. We currently would like to divide the lot into two sections. One, um, section would be for our impound purposes, which would be that secure facility, and the other half of the lot would be for, for borough purposes. They could, they could, you know, use it for, uh, storage of those surplus vehicles in the future. Excuse me. We also need to replace the three garage doors. Uh, we need to fix the building. Uh, there, like I said, it's been in disrepair for the past several years. In order to process vehicles down there, if we have a crime that comes in, we are currently using our, our facility at headquarters for our Sallyport, which basically, uh, we're altering our prisoner process, which is, is, is not a good thing in my eyes. So in order for us to process vehicles at this impound facility, we have to revise our security, um, we have to implement cameras. Uh, I requested a small heater down there so we could process, uh, vehicles and evidence in the winter months. Uh, the camera system is already in that area at the gas pump, so it wouldn't be a huge cost to add some security cameras to that, uh, impound facility. Um, this process would also help with the upcoming accreditation process, which would bring our impound yard and building up to current standards and accepted police practice. Uh, we estimate this cost at approximately twenty thousand dollars. I would also kindly request the, an air purification system at our current evidence room within our police facility. This evidence room is located on the second floor, uh, and if we have considerable seizure of, um, CDS, marijuana, or other, other infectious materials, as soon as you get off the elevator, you, you know that there was, there was a large arrest over the weekend. What this air purification system does is it turns the air over several times, uh, throughout the course of the day, purifying that system and, and basically scrubbing the air. Um, once again, this particular matter, biological evidence, it becomes, it can become airborne. What this is gonna do is, once again, just scrub the air and make it safer for my officers or anyone that's within that building. There have been studies showing that, uh, the storage of marijuana does have associated risks with mold exposure. Even with the destruction process pending, we still house some evidence dating back to the nineteen eighties. This current project would cost approximately forty-eight hundred dollars. The last item I would respectfully request is one police interceptor SUV. As you are aware, our police fleet has not been, uh, replaced over the years as in more prosperous times. The average age and mileage of our fleet is ever increasing, um, which also increases the maintenance cost for those vehicles. Our average police vehicle patrol mileage is in excess of sixty thousand miles. Police vehicles are used around the clock and mere mileage cannot be used to judge when a police car, uh, should be replaced. Police vehicles frequently make hard acceleration, hard stops, which puts a significant wear and tear on those vehicles. Eighty thousand miles on a police vehicle is very different than eighty thousand miles on your passenger vehicle at home. The cost of a police interceptor, uh, SUV with installation of equipment would cost approximately forty-two thousand dollars. The newer vehicles are thirty percent more fuel efficient at idle and twenty-five percent more fuel efficient overall. These new six-cylinder vehicles would be replacing our current fleet of eight-cylinder vehicles over the next few years to come. Thank you for your consideration.
Just clarify, asking for an extra forty-eight hundred for the air purification...
Purification system, yes.
And then, uh, extra two thousand for the, um, vehicle, so going from forty to forty-two.
That's correct.
Okay. Other questions or comments for the chief? I was, I was gonna ask, how do you know when we get our undercover vehicle, but I'll stay with you. Jeannie and then Carmella?
Yeah, just to verify that you're requesting to, uh, purchase an SUV under capital?
Yes.
And a patrol, um, vehicle under your operating budget?
That's correct.
Correct? Okay. Alright. And so the total requested for capital is twenty-five plus forty-eight plus forty-two?
It would come out to approximately sixty-six thousand dollars, eight seventy-four, I believe.
Okay. Okay.
So it's forty-two thousand for the, for the automobile?
Tw- tw- twenty-five, so that's sixty-seven, so it's seventy, basically seventy-two.
And then he'd add for the...
But, but, but he was also, another forty in the operating.
No, wait a minute.
Did he say the impound, improvements to impound yard you said were twenty thousand?
Exactly, twenty thousand for the impound yard.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed it, okay.
So it's already included?
So, so, so we're, we're net with the, net even basically on the, um, so the twenty-five thousand is covering both impound and the air floor.
Air floor, that's correct.
But, but you did say the undercover vehicle was forty-two, not forty?
Yeah.
Forty-two thousand.
So you're asking for an additional two?
Right.
So it's just two thousand adjustment and...
That's what I thought.
And the twenty-five thousand, in a way, again, is not just your department because you're gonna be, uh, able to make part of the impound, current impound area available for other departments to use. Is that what I also heard?
We are gonna separate the lot?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright. Thanks for that, uh, clarification.
Yeah, I, I, the question I have is, um, what you need in the, in the building right now as an air handler or whatever you call it, the forty-eight hundred. Um, it would seem to me, I, first of all, I can't believe that that wasn't done, you know, with that big project. Is there any money left in that, in that project at all that can be transferred? I mean, it seems to me that, that's something that should have been thought about, you know, in, in that whole process. I hate bringing dead horses up there.
Okay, so that, because the, it, public safety and Harley-Dodge are, were together, so that ordinance is still open, so, um, what we can do, what, once this ordinance comes up, we can look at funding it through, or, or if we decide that we don't even need to do ordinance, so if we're gonna fund it that way, so we'll leave it here, so we, we have a holder for it, but the funding source may already be appropriated, so it won't reduce the, um, the capital, uh, balance. Good, good point. Anything else? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Library?
Uh, the library presented a capital spending plan for the five-year period, two thousand thirteen through seventeen. Um, we did, uh, submit something last fall. It has been reviewed by our Buildings and Grounds Committee. Um, we have a new chairman, Bill Van Risen, who just joined the board, um, this, uh, this year, and, uh, he is going to explain, uh, in more detail our proposed projects. Um, we have developed a list of priorities in terms of our capital projects. Uh, the less crucial items have been moved out past, uh, the five years. Top priority is HVAC. We just continue to have more and more servicing requirements, um, and I can tell you from working in the building, um, it, it's, just seems, every day, there's another issue coming up. So we've allocated a total of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for scheduled HVAC equipment replacement, um, stretching out to two thousand and sixteen. Um, and this amount has been spread over four years, um, so we can allocate in increments. Um, so if the equipment remains in service for four years, we will have the funds to pay for it when needed, or if it begins to fail, we will have the funds to repair or replace it incrementally. Uh, this year, we have the parking lot and addressable fire alarm items, uh, and these are initial amounts for professional fees. We have included money for carpeting in the Children's Services Department. Our carpeting is showing, uh, extreme wear, uh, because the building is so heavily used. Uh, we have completed a strategic plan process in two thousand and twelve. Uh, the whole, uh, theme of the recommendations, uh, from the public has come out as the building, uh, needs a lot of refreshing, um, updating, um, bright, and make it brighter. So we would recommend that carpet, uh, we hope to begin this year in the children's room, refreshing. We started last summer with some new furniture. Um, we have some new additions that will be coming in before summer of this year, and, uh, the carpeting, we would hope, would be done at the same time. So I'm going to turn this over to Bill Van Risen and he can explain and probably answer your question in greater detail since he's in the profession, shall we say. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello? I'm Bill Van Risen. I, uh, recently appointed to the Board of Trustees, as Nancy mentioned, um, and made chairman of the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Um, we, uh, compiled this list and this request, uh, basically by gathering information from three areas. Uh, you know, general building maintenance, Nancy had mentioned the problems that, uh, with the HVAC and things that are ongoing. Uh, that, of course, was part of the information that we used to create this budget. We also had this strategic plan study, which, um, uh, we received a lot of information, uh, about people's general impression of the building. And, uh, using that information, uh, it found its way into this request. And lastly, there was an architectural study done in two thousand and ten where, uh, several technical issues were, uh, the building has, just due to its age, uh, were pointed out, uh, to the board, the, the library trustees. And those technical issues have been, um, looked at and sort of spread out, as Nancy said, over a few years, and this, uh, this budget request this year, uh, is, is really just sort of, um, putting the most important ones up front and, uh, getting a, uh, starting out what will be progressively more work done in certain areas. And the most important one is the HVAC, uh, but, uh, actually, I guess I'll go through this list in order since, uh, uh, this hasn't really been prioritized in, in order of preference, but, uh, the top one is landing, is in walkways at the exit doors. Uh, that's where, that was recommended by, uh, an inspection that was done by some architects, where, uh, it's a safety issue when you exit the building, there's some places where you need little concrete pads so that it's more level and it's easier to get out of the building. Uh, and the book drop, that came from the, uh, strategic plan study. That was, uh, something that, uh, a lot of people wanted to have a book drop that you could drive up to, and so what we're planning to do is pour a little footing, they've already purchased the, the piece, and, uh, we're just gonna mount it, uh, in a place that you can drive up to it. Uh, the study to upgrade the addressable fire alarm system. Uh, the fire alarm system in the building is, um, reaching the end of its useful life. It, uh, it was really an advanced system when it was put in, but, uh, now, of course, there's, uh, been so many upgrades over the years and, uh, what makes this a little trickier than most buildings is that, uh, there, as I'm sure you know, there's some issues in the building where there, where there's asbestos and things, and, uh, what we need to do is study it in more detail, uh, as opposed to just, um, doing a direct replacement of all of the smoke detectors and, uh, fire alarms in the building, um, we're, we're gonna need to look at it a little bit more closely. So this money is to just, uh, get a study done for that. Uh, next item was a study to replace the HVAC and baseboard. Uh, I think that, that has been an ongoing issue, as, as Nancy mentioned, and there are still some open questions there. Uh, it's, again, it's not a simple replacement where you take one broken piece and, and a simple replacement where you take one broken piece and, and put a new, a new piece in that same spot, uh, I think this is an opportunity to make some improvements in the performance of the equipment, uh, and it's also, um, we need to understand why the equipment is breaking down, because some of it is breaking down prematurely, uh, the paint, repair the skylight box frames, uh, there's some of the skylights leaked and, uh, it caused some water damage inside the, uh, boxes that lead up to the skylight, uh, replace the front parking lot and install technical warning pads, uh, that, that actually isn't the amount to replace the parking lot, that's to, uh, look at the parking lot, uh, a little bit, uh, and actually design the work that needs to be done, because, um, there are some issues with the parking lot, some improvements that can be made, uh, and so we need to study that, and then clean and seal and pre-coat, re-coat the concrete roof faces, uh, that's the upper part of the building that you see when you, um, you know, the bottom part's all brick and the upper part is white concrete, and a lot of it is, um, showing age just from, uh, staining, like, uh, you know, it's from pollution really, that sort of sticks to the white concrete and stains, and this actually sort of came out of the, uh, strategic plan, a lot of people commented that the building is kind of looking old and, and, and it needs to be kind of cleaned up, and, and I think this is an important part of that, is to clean that off and then put a coating on it that will, um, keep it clean, uh, and then replace the carpeting in the children's section Nancy mentioned, uh, it's just only carpeting needs to be, uh, replaced, and we would like to do more than that, but, um, we've spread it out over several years, uh, we can move around and do portions of the library.
Rob, and then Jeannie?
Thank you, um, I just have a question about the, some of the consultant, uh, for example, I, I may be mistaken, but I, I thought that, um, Nancy said we were gonna replace the HVAC anyway, so why do we need to pay, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars to study why the equipment we have right now is breaking down, wouldn't the contractor who's gonna install the new stuff do that as part of the price of replacing?
Uh, well, we had a, um, when the architectural study was done in two thousand and ten, the architects recommended that in two thousand and sixteen, we replace, uh, we budget three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace the all mechanical equipment.
Uh-huh.
And, um, so that's where that initiated, and then now some of the equipment is starting to break down, and their, 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 um, buildings and maintenance guy, Tom, uh, is, is really, uh, we're lucky we have him because he can keep these, this equipment running, and what we're really, what we need to know is, uh, why is that equipment breaking down? That's part of the problem, is that, um, some of it is breaking down prematurely, it should, it should last to two thousand and sixteen, and we think we might have to replace it before that, so the first question is, uh, is to do like, uh, testing of the system and find out, uh, how, what is causing this breakdown, and then, uh, the second part of that professional service would be to first test it and then design a new, try and design a new system that is more efficient, uh, and, and because the equipment is, these days is much more, uh, is much more efficient than it was in the past, and the controls that, uh, exist in that building are really old, it's a old computerized system that, where the thermostats control how the heat goes in and out of the building, and I suspect that part of the, it's, it's partly the system itself and partly the controls, and it's, it's become, um, difficult to understand, uh, and it's, to me, it's not just a simple replacement, I think that, uh, uh, the people who are working on the equipment are just working on the equipment, and they're working on it piece by piece, and we need someone to look at the whole system.
But, so, so when we would hire a contractor to eventually replace it in two thousand and sixteen or before, we would have to have our own plan to give him as to what we, he would want, so, so we say this is what we need, they don't come in and provide that service?
Yes, and there, and another possibility, see, we, we took that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we thought if we spread it out over a few years, another possibility is that one system might break down, and we might replace just one system next year, because it could be done in four parts, really.
Okay, thank you.
Jeannie?
Yeah, um, I think the most important question to me is, is the library safe, of course, we went through the asbestos removal and several other, we went around that, um, for, for several years, now, the question is, is it safe, um, do you believe that with these items you will improve safety for both the workers and also all the visitors?
Oh, yes, definitely, the building, uh, is safe, and, uh, the majority of the recommendations that came from the architectural study in two thousand and ten were safety issues, uh, issues that have to do with, um, ADA and egress and, uh, the fire alarm system was one of those, and it is, it's an important, uh, part of the safety of the building, and the, uh, the asbestos, uh, that was done, uh, in previous years, uh, in response to, uh, leaks, uh, we don't, you don't anticipate any need to remove all the asbestos in the building, because it's very safe where it is, and what happened was, uh, some leaks caused damage, and, uh, we think that part of the, that, those leaks were from the roof, but they could also have something to do with the mechanical system, the ductwork could've caused some, uh, dampness, uh, that causes those problems, so, uh, that was really a, the asbestos abatement, uh, problem was really, it was, it was a response to, uh, damage to the building, really, uh, we don't, and the building is perfectly safe, and there's no need to pursue that any further unless there's more damage.
Okay, good, thank you.
Bob?
Could I, I'd just like to add something.
Yep.
From a safety standpoint, the parking lot issue is really two different, uh, issues there, one of them definitely is safety, we've had people fall on our parking lot, um, there are some holes and so forth that really need to be repaired, the other thing with the parking lot, we would, if there's any way, we could gain some parking spaces, because when we have our mini-course sessions or other, uh, large groups meeting in the chase room, that plus the normal, you know, in, in and out traffic to the, uh, library building, uh, definitely presents, uh, parking issues, but there is a safety issue there with the parking lot.
Nancy, when you say parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
Which item is?
Um, we are replace, or, we are, um, suggesting that there be a study for five thousand dollars on repaving the front parking lot, and the study would be, obviously, a safety issue, but, uh, perhaps, uh, trying to regain or find some additional parking somewhere.
Okay, so, um.
So initially, it's a study, if you saw, I'm, I guess, the five-year plan is not in front of them, okay, um.
See, I guess with five thousand.
You would see it spread over several years.
Yeah, I guess my question is, with five thousand dollars, that's not for totally repave the entire.
That's a study.
That's just a study, right?
They have it here.
Is, is that, um, not to throw something on Bob's department, but is that something we can look at initially?
Yeah.
In-house?
I'm sorry, what?
Is that, is that potential of, uh, in-house engineering look initially, or? No, not the HVAC, the, uh, parking lot?
Oh, you know, absolutely, we can provide input to that, and I just wanted to add that, uh, I was around when the first, last HVAC system went into, so I know I have files and studies that were already done on the library HVAC system, which I'm sure I can provide to whoever would be looking at it in the future, okay?
And also, Bob, while you're up there, um, restriping some of the spaces?
Well, that, that, that was my question to him, was, was the, the park, I, I think the potential is to look at that in-house before we fund it otherwise.
I think that makes sense.
Good, thank you.
Uh, Bob?
Yeah, just real quick.
The other, not Vogel, Landrigan, sorry, too many damn Bobs around here. Bill?
Just real, real quick, and regardless of all safety issue and asbestos, from what I recall, after Hurricane Irene, when I was down there, the library's been pretty diligent with, uh, testing the air quality over the years, correct? And you've addressed it, and I believe, don't you still do it on and off?
Yeah.
You test the air quality?
Yes.
Yeah, that's my thought.
The trustees, uh, have decided that it's important to monitor the air quality, so we have been doing that. And of course, any abatement project is done according to all state standards, so.
Carmella?
I, I, I think Louis DeRosa's probably gonna kill me for saying this.
Uh-oh.
Sorry, chief, um, study to upgrade to addressable fire alarms, I mean, I, I think that we have probably some of the best professionals in Morris County, I mean, is that something that you could help them with, Lou? I mean, is, you know, looking at, at the fire alarm, unless, you know, so they don't have to go out and spend five thousand dollars on, on looking at the whole system?
Uh, short answer would probably be no, I'd probably give you advice, but, um, because I wear other hats, um, I've had a lot of design engineering, I've worked in that world, but, uh, so I, I mean, I can be happy to give you my opinion and advice and work along, I do it other agencies in town.
Yeah, okay.
But I don't do design and stuff like that, I can't cut a deal, hats over here.
Rob?
It was also on the board, also, I can't take a long yet, the system that we use, because it doesn't identify specific areas of the library where there is the problem, it's, it's a nineteen-sixty system, basically, uh, when the building was put in, and he just believes it needs to be brought up to date, and if you ever had a fire situation, and he's able, and I could look at it in the fire plan, and take a look at it, because it does have to consider the, you know, how it would be located.
Yeah, because the.
And then, I mean, remember, two years out, you got it in there for the replacement.
Yeah, again, there's money appropriated a few years out in our five-year plan to replace it, uh, but, uh, what makes it a little bit tricky is that, um, is the asbestos in the ceilings, because the fire, the smoke detectors are all in the ceilings, and right now, there's, the building's in five zones, and if it were a modern system, uh, so if it, if there's a fire, uh, it could, we'd tell the fire department which zone of the building there's a fire in, but in a modern system, it tells them exactly where it is, because each one is addressable, so, can you just replace the whole, all of the, the smoke detectors with addressable detectors is the question, and has, gets into what wires are available, and whether or not new wires have to be run, so you could save a lot of money by using the wires that are there and just replacing all the pieces, but, um, we're not sure if we'll need more, uh, devices, because we probably will need more devices, and then, how could we get wires to those devices without disturbing the asbestos?
So, I, I just wanna do a little filler here, because we do tape this and, uh, at, so people watching at home would've missed what, uh, Chief DeRosa said and Tom Bittenger said, question from Carmella, which was probably heard, was, can, can we do any of this in-house, and, um, the chief replied that, yes, he could advise, but this is really beyond, um, the scope of what the fire department can, uh, provide, so really, it, it is an outside resource to review and design a new, uh, addressable fire alarm system. Rob?
Thanks, I guess my only concern with the request is that of a hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, forty-five thousand for consultants, I'm just wondering if there's any way we can sharpen our pencils on the consultant request, that's all.
And I, and I think minimally, right now, we're saying five thousand hold for the, uh, parking lot part of it, to look for in-house, and, um, yeah, certainly looking at that thirty-five thousand for, um, HVAC and baseboard, I, personally, that sounds high to me.
Just, just, just asking.
Yep, that's a good question. All right, any other questions on the library? Thank you, Bill, for, and just a, before we go on to the, uh, other.
Bob, can we go back and ask a question of Bob Vogel, he didn't offer that opportunity to ask him the question.
Sorry about that, Bob Vogel, you're back to the witness, I mean, back to the, yeah.
Thanks, ma'am.
Um, the question is, as we all understand, that Green Avenue has been long overdue, we've been talking about it for many, many years, now, um, in your presentation, you mentioned that we're waiting for the state, um, perhaps we can get the project started in May, uh, depending on when the state will get back to us regarding the grant and all that.
Right.
Now, I'm hoping that we will have the commitment to fix Green, um, Avenue this year, even when we don't get any funding from the state, is that the understanding that we have?
That, that, that is what the last year's council said.
Right, that's why I wanted to raise this again.
It is, it is up to this year's council to deliver on that, I haven't heard anything contrary to that, um, that, and, and I think people should note, because, um, you'll, you'll see this year that we're only funding one road, and I think the public needs to understand that will, there will, there will be cycles, if you look at the priority list, the next five roads basically equal Green Avenue, Green, uh, Green Avenue's a high priority, it is equivalent to multiple roads because of the amount of traffic and the distance it covers, so this year, we're, we're funding one road, next year, we'll probably be looking at five roads, and that's just the way the process goes.
Thank you, so, so just so I understand it correctly, we are gonna encumber, or hopefully encumber six hundred and thirty thousand dollars for Green, regardless of whether or not we get the money from the state, yes?
Right.
And we are expecting, what, from the state, maybe two hundred thousand dollars or something like that?
The state awards are between one fifty and two fifty for all the towns in the state.
Right, so then, since the next, uh, road on the, um, priority list is Vinton, and it equals two fifty, does it make sense to, to draw up plans to do Vinton, and then once we get the money back from the state, to actually start that project?
I think that's a reasonable approach, I absolutely think that, uh, we should be prepared to do the additional projects, and, you know, uh, as I look at the budget, I was looking at, at it last night with all of you, and I'm just thrilled with how twenty thirteen is shaping up, quite honestly, I didn't think we were gonna be in this, as, as, as solid a financial position, uh, moving forward in twenty thirteen, as we had predicted a couple of years ago, it really looked like we were gonna be in worse shape, so I'm happy with where we are, and I, I do believe that if project performance on the carryover projects from last year is good, and if our financials stay solid, there's absolutely no reason why we can't be in good position to do more projects towards the end of the year.
Well, I, I think the key thing to your point is, these roads, Vinton on down, are not going away.
Absolutely right, so, so I would ask if the council agrees that we instruct the engineer to, of course, he's got a long list, to, uh, to get Vinton ready to go, so that if by some miracle the state wakes up and gives us the money in May or something, we can actually get these, get everything all done and, and potentially get Vinton done, uh, in the fall?
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Right, yep.
So.
So, yeah, it's.
Is there, do we need a consensus for that?
I, I, I think it's, uh, I don't, yeah, I think it's.
We'll do it.
Been directed at, it, it's not a, uh.
I, I do think, though, it's very important that we're not making any promises to the residents of Vinton right now, that their project will be done in twenty thirteen, because we have such a long list from twenty twelve that we are carrying over from twenty thirteen, that was one of my main concerns, is.
Yeah, I, I think it's.
I feel that that's what happened with Green Avenue, and now we're finally making good on Green Avenue, but they've waited a long time and been told, year after year, it's gonna be done that year, so I, I think we should be very careful.
No, I, I think it's.
Green is certainly, the priority, it's just that if, and if we get money to go, and we can get the design done, it, we just hand it off to a contractor, I mean, obviously, we can't make any promises, but, you know, proper planning prevents.
And Vinton is not the type of road we're gonna get state aid on either, and so, it's gonna be out of pocket, and if it's, uh, if it's ready to go by the end of the year, uh, it makes perfect sense.
Yep, so the overall message is, we, we don't, uh, sit back and ignore all those that are not funded, we get working on it, priority is, obviously, take care of the projects that are on this year's list, and then start moving, working ahead, so, overall, just a quick wrap-up on the general budget, uh, capital budget, there's roughly a million dollars of pro, projects, roughly, we're transferring a million in, so we are funding what is happening this year, the, and for all intents and purposes, the general capital fund is at bare minimum, because we had seventy-eight thousand coming in, so any other additional funding, as Rob pointed out, would either come from, uh, miracle from the state sending things quickly, or other, other sources, so let's move on to, uh, electric, yeah, electric Welcome back, Michael. So, I see that electric is below water, but we'll start with electric and then go back up one page. God, I'm on the wrong.
What was that page, Diggle? So we're at page thirteen?
Page thirteen, I was on the wrong page, not the first time in my life.
The first item was, uh, was added earlier this year, and a couple weeks back, I was here.
And, and, and we're committed to that at this point, since we've passed the ordinance?
The additional digger there, uh, the next item is, uh, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for repairs to the Water and Light Building, just sent a memo to, uh, Jeannie and Carmella and Ray and Jim regarding, it's not a whole lot of money, and it's basically mandated approach to, uh, some repairs that need to be done in that building.
And I'll, I'll just summarize, I've got it right here, Michael, it's roof, it's exterior facade, it's heating system, it's interior, it's interior garage bay, it's the Butler Building, it's a, it's a myriad of, of, uh, as Michael said, uh, small repairs, but repairs that are needed.
And, and that's one of the oldest buildings in Madison, and it's, unfortunately, when it was remodeled back in the early nineties, there were certain parts of it that he did not address, number one is the heating system, the boiler is, is relatively new, boilers are, uh, I think, about four years old, but the steam pipes that deliver steam throughout the building, their fittings are failing, the blowers, overhead blowers are starting to fail, and unfortunately, a lot of them are in the walls and the ceilings, so we've just been patching it as we go along, that's probably what we'll continue to do, I mean, that's, we wanna expend quite a substantial amount of capital, but, uh, I think we can make do with that for now, uh, third item is replacement of my, my vehicle, which is a two thousand Jeep that's pretty much run its course.
Right. Having written it with you, I cannot agree with you more. Thank you for stretching so many years out of it.
And as Bob alluded to earlier, the, uh, improvements in the traffic signals, and the additional funding for Central and Fairview, we, Bob and I both discussed this, and we just, we both felt that, uh, the addition of a arm-style signal would match what we've already done on Noe and Greenwood and Britton. They would all be pretty much the same. And the, uh, transfer switches for emergency generators for three, is it three receptions?
Or about fifteen hundred to two thousand.
Right.
Questions for Mike? Carmelo?
Mike, I'll, I'll go back to, um, I think, uh, the chief mentioned that, um, Central and Fairview Signal will have a gas generator? Is that what you wanted?
It was just a, an ability to hook up a portable-
An ability to. Uh, have we, we thought about the solar panels on some of those, um, you know, I, I see them so often, and I know that it's an expensive situation, but you see them in a lot of municipalities, and I'm just wondering, you know, um, if the solar panels would, um, you know, maybe we should start taking a look at that, at the busiest intersections, like this one right down here, so when you have an event like Sandy, and I know it's pretty dark when you're having rain and whatever, but there, there should be enough generated in there to at least keep them going for a while, or what, what are your thoughts on it?
I'm not all that educated in, in, in what type of solar generation power plant we would need, or system we would need for that.
Yeah.
What type of battery mechanisms are involved in that, and how big of an area-
We, we, we did talk about this, the complete streets, the, the issue is two foot one, the, the cost goes way up.
Yeah.
The, the panel is middle, is small part of it, but the battery to, uh, retain the power generated is a big cost, and actually a big space taker, so it is a, I think, something to keep in mind, but, um, may, may not necessarily be the best thing for us right now.
All right.
And we can do a little more research than that, if you'd like, but, again-
Yeah, we might be able to get some grants or something for it.
Certainly have an understanding of the-
I, I just see a lot of municipalities moving towards that, you know?
I think the ones you see are, are for relatively, not even a signal per se, they're, they're like emergency call station-
They're right on, on every, yeah, absolutely.
Or something like that.
There are the school, the school flashing lights typically are, uh, solar.
Very small, uh, requirements.
I mean, if you go Long Ridgedale Avenue into East Hanover, there's actually a solar panel on every single one of their, uh, their light, and, and I'm assuming that JC P and L is, is doing all of that.
PS is doing that.
Oh, PS is doing that? Okay.
And that, that actually feeds into their system.
All right, yeah.
But again, the, the ones that I think you're referring to are, are school flashers. I don't know that a four-way signal, I think you need a larger, larger, uh, solar unit for that, and, and a battery backup to, essentially, what it does is solar-
Something to think about.
The solar generates DC power.
Ben's very interested in solar, so we'll give him the job, hasn't-
Can't convert it back to AC, so it-
But it's, it's, you know what? I, I, I would look at it.
Ben?
I think we should look at it.
Yeah.
Uh, I do think, however, that in this particular application, it may not be the best place to start, but we'll take another look.
Yeah, they, they keep improving every year, so it's-
They do, indeed.
Yep.
Thank you.
Get cheaper, better and cheaper.
Any other questions for Mike? Thank you, Michael. Water, Water Utility?
Okay, so as far as capital projects are concerned, the Water Utility has the Ridgedale Water Main Replacement Project, uh, which has been scheduled, part of the five-year plan, part of the, uh, annual budget this year. It includes the replacement of the water main between the northern extent of, uh, municipality, Florham Park, where the Madison High School is, down to, um, essentially where Myrtle is, about fifty percent of Ridgedale Avenue is being, uh, being replaced. Uh, the existing main is old, deteriorated, uh, much of it is the four-inch cast iron leaded joint, which we've been seeking to replace, uh, for over a decade, uh, so it's part of a programmatic replacement of, uh, water mains, uh, so it's an excellent project for us to move forward with. Uh, also, I just got a surprise call from the county saying that they would be paving a portion of Central, uh, this summer, uh, without, a whole lot of heads up, so that kind of bumps up this in terms of a priority project for us. We need to get Ridgedale Avenue Water Main on the street, awarded and constructed at that intersection before the county goes through. I think we're gonna have to do some coordination and make sure that that works the right way. Um, so, uh, the Ridgedale Avenue Water Main Replacement Project, uh, is, uh, that's about half the entire length of Ridgedale Avenue at three hundred thousand dollars, and, uh, the Green Village Road, uh, uh, main to the south, that's between, uh, Woodland Road and Shumpike Road, also needs portions of that main replaced for the same reasons. It's a programmatic issue, and, uh, county also intends to pave Green Village Road this year, so, uh, a lot of those are, have become priority projects, uh, through no fault of our own, it's that we need, we need to get hopping on those water main replacement projects and get those on the street as soon as possible, so, uh, you know, Dan and I are working on those plans as we speak, and, uh, hope to have a set of bid documents by the end of the month. Okay?
And, and with the Ri, Ridgedale, it's not on the list right now for road reconstruction, so it, it will be, that three hundred includes a mill and overlay over the, just as we did on division-
Over the trench.
So we will, as we have in the division, the water main section is the best part of the road right now.
Well, let's hope not, but, uh-
That's right, yep.
But it could be.
Yep. Rob and then Jeannie?
Thank you. We spoke about this at the construction committee review, and I, I would like to suggest that, as opposed to just doing half of Ridgedale this year, that it doesn't make a lot of sense to do half the road this year, then wait a year, and then do the other half. I believe we have enough capital, and I think that the initial estimate from the engineer was that we could have the entire project completed, uh, in five or six weeks over the summer, so, since we have to do it all, why not do it all at once, only inconvenienced people that live on Ridgedale, one time instead of two? Um, and I, I have to imagine that'd be, and again, I, I'm not an expert, but, you know, as opposed to doing half it, you know, going back, breaking the connection again and redoing it, if we just do it all at once, we'll have a, a cleaner project, a, a better, you know, a more reliable, uh, design, so I think we should do it all.
So, so we, we know we're gonna do it over the next two years, we, we, we'll leave a balance this year of a hundred thousand, but we'll be, it, it's not, in, in, over two years, it's gonna be the same spot we're, where we're at.
Right, and, and, I mean, I don't know, and, and again, I, you know, I didn't take that much accounting, but I know that we have cash reserves put away for the water main replacement that we could potentially tap to spend, so that, then we can make it up over future, we can replenish that over future years, so that after the five years are done, and we've accrued the million dollars, we'll, you know, we'll still be in the same position. Since we're doing the water main replacement in a one-shot deal after five years, you know, is it possible, if we necessarily want to draw down the, the, the water utility surplus so much, to tap into that for the incremental three hundred, and then just over the next three years, build that back up to the million-dollar balance that we'll need when we go ahead and replace the meters? I, I just don't think it makes any sense to go, do half of it, go in there, you know, break the road again next year, do the other half.
But, well, we, we, we have the, we have the cash in the capital account anyway, so unless we, unless there's an emergency, which we can then go somewhere else.
Right.
So-
I mean, I just think it makes much more sense.
And Bob, as, uh, before I get more counsel comment on that, as a engineering, we're, we're ready to go, we would be ready to go the full, full length at this point?
Uh, the biggest problem for us is the survey, and the survey's done, so, uh, yeah, I think as far as stretching the main down to, uh, the next intersection, which is Park Avenue, I don't, technically, I don't really see a problem in us getting the extra plans pulled together.
And, and this would be, be able to be coordinated, uh, over the summer, so it's not school, school year?
Well, the, the, it's gonna be a struggle, but, uh, I, you know, what we're gonna have to do with Ridgedale is just prioritize that intersection up by Florham Park as the first part of the project, and we can do that in the contract documents.
So our, uh, time pressure, design-wise, or, uh, project plan-wise, is the county paving, uh, central, and the fact that with, with school, that if we did the high school section as much as possible outside of the school year, and we're now doing the other section, the southern section later on?
You know, you know what, Mayor, let me just clarify too, that the, the county had indicated central, from central north into Florham Park. I don't believe they're actually bringing the project down that far into Madison, and if push comes to shove, they'll just finish at the Florham Park line, and we'll do it another day, you know, with the county. I don't, if it's three hundred feet, I'm surprised.
It's not, yeah.
So it's not a huge project to have to work around, okay?
Sounds good.
I think it would save money doing it once, as opposed to actually, you know, twice.
Makes, makes, makes a lot of sense. Other comments, or Jeannie and then Carmela?
Yeah, um, um, my comments also about expediting this project. We've been talking about, um, safety, safety improvement along Ridgedale and Central, particularly that intersection, so it looks like that we need to really move up whatever proposal that, um, that you're thinking about to improve that intersection from a safety perspective, and that also need to be, uh, taken into account for, uh, doing the entire process.
Uh, it, it makes sense to get those reconstruction plans finalized as soon as we can. Uh, again, with a lot of committee and, uh, and resident involvement in that process, not everything we want to put on paper is final, uh, until you approve it as a governing body, but it would be good to have a couple of consensus meetings with the community in the early part of this year, so if we are in position to do the entire Ridgedale Avenue Road Reconstruction Project next year, which I think is optimistic, but if we are, um, that's great.
And we've already opened a, kept conversations with county with our desire to, uh, change the inner Central Avenue, Ridgedale, a little bit to encourage traffic, to slow down and go elsewhere. Carmelo, you had-
Yeah.
So we got Carmelo, Ben, and then Bob.
Um, you know, I, I, I think my first question is, is if you add, so this three hundred thousand dollars just to go down to Myrtle, so for Myrtle to Park Avenue, you're think, I, you know, I, I think it's about the same length?
Yeah, we tried to split it in half.
Yeah, okay, so that, that's split in half, so are, are you talking about another three hundred thousand dollars, or what, you know?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the, this figure becomes six hundred thousand?
Correct.
Okay. Um, getting back to, if you do water main, you're allowing it, you're just gonna mill and, and overlay, okay? The first year, I mean, do we allow that to settle before we start thinking about in two thousand fourteen, maybe the safety of, of Ridgedale and getting that completely paved? You know, our side of it, anyway.
Well, I, you, you never, you know, you, you never, construction's a funny business. Um, it depends which contractor and which, uh, you know, there are days that those trenches settle.
Yeah.
And some contractors do a phenomenal job at it, and some contractors don't.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, if we're extremely fortunate, we could, we could reconstruct that road within six months and not have a problem, but I think you're kind of pushing your luck. Uh, I think, based on the way the industry operates, those trenches have a high potential to settle in six months' time.
Yeah.
So you should kind of hold off the project for six months for a reconstruction project to follow up with a utility replacement project. Public service, case in point, I mean, you see them all over the place. It's, uh, it's a travesty.
Yeah, and I, I think that's another good point, is, is the coordination with public service, because as I go down Ridgedale, I see them digging up little, at, at spots. You have a lot of construction happening on that, that end from Cook Avenue-
Correct.
-with the new condos, so there's electrical work going on, there's, uh, gas lines going on, and whatever. That's gonna take a lot of coordination. I think-
There's really nothing that stops you from doing Ridgedale reconstruction in phases either, if we get into a budgetary or a decision-making situation where you want to do that, you could always split the reconstruction as well.
I, I, you know, my own opinion about letting things settle, you know, is probably, like, the best thing, you know? Uh, we have this conversation about Myrtle Avenue that, you know, it looked absolutely beautiful, and now it's doing this.
Right.
You know, no, I, I, it's absolutely true, it depends on your, your contractor, but that's a heavily-used road. I would rather, you know, err on, you know, on, on being a little more conservative, you know?
So would I.
And, and really having a good plan for what the Ridgedale residents really want there. Yeah, it has to be a complete plan, I think, you know, once we get those water mains done.
I think if you look at the long-term plans in terms of a twenty-year road plan, uh, where, where we, where we need to be with Ridgedale, so, uh, you know, if we get it done in one year or two years, really doesn't make much difference.
Ben and then Bob?
Thank you. Um, the suggestion from, uh, Rob about doing this in, as one complete project made a lot of sense to me, but I have no expertise in this area, so I'm just wondering why it was initially divided up.
We had projected a very, very serious budgetary issue for this year.
So it was monetary?
That's correct.
Okay. Good, thank you. But, but all else equally, you'd prefer to do it in one, as one project?
It's, it's fine with me, it's, it's a big project. Uh, it'll take more resources, uh, perhaps we can hire an inspection consultant or something like that to take some of the load off the in-house, but, uh, it can be done, absolutely. It can be managed and, and done well.
Well, what, what would be your preference?
As?
As to how to do the project? In other words, would you want to do it in two pieces, as was initially intended, or would you do it as one larger project?
So, money, money aside, that you, you having to manage this project-
Right.
-with everything else going on? Answer that question.
I like doing the work. Uh, I'd love to get it done.
Okay. Fine. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, we got Bob, and then Ostry.
All righty. Uh, just so I fully understand this, I understand what Rob was saying about doing it one shot, and it makes sense, um, but that second half of it, or that extension of what the county's going to do, would be done in two thousand fourteen and paid out in two thousand fourteen money? Or would that be paid out in two thousand thirteen money? Because we just talked about moving Vinton up, which made sense, so I just want to-
This is, this is, this is nothing to do with the actual road. I was suggesting that we replace the water main.
Oh, the water main?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Gotcha, all right.
All, all out of water utility, uh, budget, yeah, capital budget. Ostry?
Okay, thank you. So, is that, if you do the road, uh, the water replacement, then what happens to the surface of the road? When would you plan on, I think that goes to Carmella's question, because I don't see it in your list of roads here, um, you know, for the future roads, under twenty thirteen?
No, it'd be twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, Ostry.
Twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, but it's, so it'd be after division? I mean, you've got all-
If, if, if you go back to the five-year capital projection that we had done, we had structured it in such a way that we'd do a water line segment one year, and then a road reconstruction segment within eighteen months.
Right, that makes sense to me, because, I mean, I remember-
I can get you a copy of that, so-
Oh, okay, so that's on there?
We do have it planned out.
Okay, good.
Correct.
Then the other question would be, is the timing is obviously really critical. I mean, it really has to be done during the summer when high school is not in session, or it's gonna be a nightmare.
Uh, that portion of it has to be done in, first, no question, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, uh, we're gonna have to put something in the contract documents that says, this section has to be done by a certain period of time, uh, so, no question.
I mean, even the lower portion, um, if you add the additional, I mean, people are coming up Cook, they come up Walnut, they come up Park to go to the high school, I mean, that's-
It's a busy road.
Well, Central Avenue is gonna take care of it.
Traffic safety's gonna be in, involved in it as well, but it's, it's, uh, it's a significant project, you're right.
Yeah, and we just make sure we really can do it in that time.
I, I think with that in mind, as you plan out the project and get ready, and we get ready to go out to bid, is, um, you're, we're not gonna be able to avoid some of the done during school year, and with Central Avenue, school at one end, and high school at the during school year. And with Central Avenue, school at one end and high school at the other end, probably the specifications is the fact that no work hap, you know, there's a full road opening during school pickup and drop-off times.
That makes sense.
But, so just have to...
A school's own issue, we, we would have to specifically address in specs. And we've done that before.
Okay, so, very good. So Jim and then I'll...
I'm just gonna suggest maybe, Bob, we look at it doing it as a bid alternate. And so we, at that point in time, we can make, the council can make the decision that, yes, we've got A, we've got B, timing's gonna work, everyone's comfortable.
You used to be able to do that in state local public contracts law. You can't do it anymore because the value of the bid alternates is the same as the value of the base bid. They won't let you do it. It's, uh, if it's not less than 20% of the base bid value, you cannot do an alternate. Go figure.
Yep, I, I hear you. So I hear consensus that we are increasing the water utility capital budget by 300,000. That will leave a balance of 100, but we knew after, uh, 2014, we're, we're gonna be right where we planned to be anyway, so. And we'll get it out of the way. Thank you, Rob, for that suggestion.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else? Robert, you've got something?
Can, before he leaves, can I ask him a question?
Before, uh, Mr. Bob Vogel, you've been once again called back to witness stand.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I meant, you know, I didn't want to interrupt the, uh, I, I was looking at what you requested. Um, the stormwater problems on Elmer Street and Bello, we're not, we're not going to think about doing those. I don't see them on the approved. Or am I not seeing it right?
So it's, uh, Elmer Box Culvert and Bello Stabilizer, which is on a requested but not funded.
Yeah.
That is a good question. And, um, my sense of that issue was, I think, since Bello Woods is in a park, there was some discussion behind the scenes about whether that was a trust fund potential project or not. I'm not certain of the outcome of that discussion, Carmella. Uh, but the fact that it's not in general capital, uh, I think what we were waiting for in a sense was that perhaps Whippenny River might be a participant in that project in 2014, not in 2013. And so the combination of it possibly being trust-funded, possibly being funded by Whippenny Watershed, uh, at least in a part of it, factored into that decision.
Okay.
I'm not sure if Jim has anything to add.
Yeah, so we, we need to find out from Whippenny Water, um, you know, in our discussions with Art.
I think that federal funding source is on a relatively long timeframe for an answer. And so I'm not 100% sure, but I think Art was saying that it takes some time for them to get back on the, on that type of funding.
So we'll be, for Bello, we'll be working on alternative funds, funding sources, and that will come back. The Elmer Box Culvert, are we still dealing with easement issues in order to work on that potential? Or we're, like, even if we funded it, can we do it?
Yeah.
I don't really have a good answer. I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. It's, it's 12 noon on a Saturday.
Since we've always involved the lawyers in the process and the lawyer's not here, I'm not sure I can give you a quick answer, I think.
So just so, we, we do have, there's some extenuating circumstances behind that. We leave it at that.
That's correct.
Bob, Landy?
Yeah, a lot of bombs. Um, when we had talked about these projects a while back, and I know about, uh, Bello, Bello Stabilizer, if these are recurring problems that occur, you know, crop up during a storm, there's the Federal Hazard Mitigation Program, which we had talked about applying for funding there. It would take a while to get it and I'll work with you on it, but that is an option as well.
So, that's, that's great. So we'll work on multiple avenues.
Great.
All right. Are we done with Bob now?
Yep, thank you.
He may step down. Robert?
I just want to clarify, uh, a comment that I heard from you, Rob. And correct me if I'm wrong. Did you make a statement that we have reserves set aside for water mains?
No.
Water meter?
Water meter, I said.
Oh.
I, I just didn't know if the funding was readily available out of the capital or if there was some creative, you know, ways to, to tap that while paying it back over time.
Okay.
So it's just a cash flow issue, that was all.
Forget the question.
Very good. And I will, since Rob has now said tap twice related to water, I'll give him credit for that.
I didn't mean to.
All right, I will, uh, open the meeting to the public for any questions on the, all the capital budgets we just heard. The general capital, the electric and water. Pat? Yeah, that's quite all right.
Pat Rose, when was going to have again? Um, first question is on the stuff that's already appropriated. Uh, that $2 million is no, does not reflect, is not reflected in any of the current surplus accounts. Is that correct? The money's set aside somewhere else?
Robert? It's cap, it's, go ahead. It's, since, since encumbered, it is not...
It's encumbered in the general capital fund. Uh, it's completely segregated funds. It has nothing to do with surplus.
Okay. The second question, do we have other projects that have been essentially been completed that we haven't completed the accounting for that have excess funds that we could recapture this year? Or are we up to date in terms of all the projects we've currently worked on?
We are, from the, uh, the head answer in the back, we are pretty much caught up to date. We, we do that on annual basis. We'll look at any open ordinances and retire them and, uh, we've been very aggressive with that.
Anything else that's currently in flight that's substantially done, but we believe we will have money at the end of the project that we could sort of consider for this year, even though it's not fully complete?
The, the only one that I know has, and, and we're all, we're drawing down on it, and we've talked about it already, is the Hartley Dodge Public Safety, which will, you know, there is substantial money in there, but we've got the boilers, we've just talked about the, um, air, air purifier system, so, um, and we also have some other things in this building that need to be taken care of.
Okay, so they're still, they're still coming up. Okay. Um, in terms of the, uh, the fire department, uh, I guess it's really fire and police, the FCC radio frequency, that seems to me like that could possibly be some type of shared service either with surrounding communities or other communities in the area that use the same technology. I would assume everybody's in the same boat in terms of having to address their, their radio issues, uh, rather than each town have to do this individually, maybe come up with a consortium of people who have, are in the same position. I don't know if we've considered that, but...
Chief, do you have a...
You know what I'm saying?
The radio frequency...
We're, we're actually in a situation where we want to get ahead of the other towns. Okay. Because there's gonna be a, a number of towns because of the band narrowing that are gonna be looking to resolve their issues like us. So lose being smart and getting ahead of the curve and say, let's get ahead of these other towns. And so, um, uh, that's, uh, that's kind of gonna be our strategy is to get ahead of them. So we hopefully have the opportunity to not have to replace all the equipment.
Okay. So everybody doesn't have to do the same adjustments to the equipment that we would do if they're using similar technology or...
Different...
Does each, does everybody have their own frequency that they have to grab a hold of?
Yes.
Okay. Um, that question was already answered. And in terms of the water metering project, I think you, we're setting aside money every year on that. When do we, when do we make our last sort of payment to that reserve account?
Um, we're in the process of, yeah, a couple, a couple of years for the, the water contribution payments. This will be 600, goes this year and two more years, we'll have a million in.
So at the end of 20, right, and then, and then the late, then the water rates will actually come down?
We have, we had a 10, we did a 10, 20% increase and 10%, uh, half of that was a sunsetted one to fund this project.
Because I was thinking about, you know, Rob was saying, you know, possibly start to step in increases, but if the, if that money is no longer be needed two years down the road, you might want to factor that into the thinking as well.
Right, yeah. That, that would be, I, I, I think, um, the intention, as we talked about the rates, is not a one-year look, a multi-year, multi-year look.
Okay. Um, then I guess I, you know, I just keep reiterating the point that I think if we did take a closer look at the electric utilities, um, 14, 15, 16, and maybe 17 surpluses, and you may be able to start to think about advancing some of the money that you have in reserve into this year. Um, yes. You see her shaking her head, Doc? But, you know, again, absent a, a, a real financial analysis, it's hard to say. It's just something I, I think, you know, I pressed this issue last year when you had the town hall meeting. You said, what, what sources of funding? I think if we had started to look at that sooner, you might have been able to do this now. But, you know, again, it may take a little bit of time, but I, I really impressed upon you. I think that is one of the most critical things that you have to look at as a body. Where is, you know, where is that surplus gonna be going? And to what advantage can we utilize it? I mean, there's a lot, you have a very large project list. And I know I've been on that list and I appreciate the fact that, you know, our neighborhood finally got done. But, you know, there are other parts of the town and other infrastructure needs. And, uh, I hate to have money sort of just sort of sitting around doing nothing if we can utilize it as a community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard on the capital part of this meeting? Okay, seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and move on to, uh...
My name is Stuart Carr. I'm an interloper from Chatham Township.
Welcome. We, we welcome interlopers.
Uh, question with respect to the budget. It's a little bit off point, but wanted to just double check. Um, is the Green Village property sale part of the capital budget in 2013 or 14? Or is that still...
That, that, the, the actually, Green Village Road School sale, the borough was involved only as a redevelopment agency. It is a board of education property. So the proceeds from that sale, uh, is board of education.
Okay, so it's really a board of education concept, I'd make that. I would just again implore you folks, if you can, this is an asset right here. Uh, my kids grew up with Green Village School, et cetera, et cetera. Um, this is a jewel, speaking of your, uh, state of New Jersey, green acres, a jewel right here. And even though you got your 53 acres down the street now, um, you better think long and hard before you take that and make it into condos or mixed use or whatever else it is. Because it's an incredible asset, I think. I think folks here take it for granted. And if you guys can take the cash, whatever it is, the 5 million or 7 million, whatever it is, the purchase price, and whatever kind of run rate you're gonna get on the ratables going forward, and take that amount, amortize it back on a per resident basis, it's probably not a whole lot of money. And the opportunity cost of giving that up versus what you're getting on a run rate revenue-wise over time is probably not that big. So I would implore you folks, I know the doors has already left the barn, I think, but if you can think that through, because you've got a terrific asset here, and I really think before you let that go, that you ought to see if there's a way to make sure it stays as is in some fashion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're, we're now in capital budget. We've got the, uh, operating budget. I'm ready to move forward, Ben?
Yes, I am indeed. Thank you. Um, I have a motion that I would like to make to take this process to the next step. And, and so the motion is that we direct Robert Califford to work with the borough's auditor to draft the budget as presented for introduction at the Borough Council meeting scheduled for March 11, 2013.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Jeannie?
Yeah, um, I think it's, it's, it's great that we, the past couple of budget meetings, you know, it's, it has been very positive. And it's great to hear, uh, from both presentations from last meeting and also this meeting that we're in great financial shape. Um, the budget is good, it's very positive, it's ultra-conservative. Um, and, um, and also glad to hear that we're doing exceptionally well, um, in surplus generation. So all those things are very positive. And, um, and we're looking to generate over $4 million in, uh, electric surplus, another 600 in water surplus, and perhaps another 4 million in municipal surplus. So those are all great things that's happening this year. Um, so, um, it is my personal opinion that it's time, um, to give our taxpayer a break this year by not increasing taxes this year. Um, I think we can achieve that by doing a, um, a, a, a few things. Um, some minor adjustment in our 2013 revenue to better reflect, um, the actuals, um, particularly a couple of things that, actually several things that we discussed, um, earlier today. As far as revenue is concerned, we're not, um, including things that we discussed such as FEMA, um, nothing on GBR, um, and other share services contract. I believe the only one that we have as a list of revenue is our health contracts. There are some other ones, um, that we're not including. Also, um, we should also look at construction code, perhaps tax assessor and, um, and some other expense, uh, other revenues that we're not including in the revenue list. So I'm hoping that we can take a look at that again and see if we can make minor adjustments. So that way, um, it's not like that we're looking for a lot of money this year. We're looking for $199,000 out of the $25 million budget. Um, I think we're building a lot of flexibility this year and, um, and we're able to do that if we're willing to. Thank you.
May I respond?
Yes.
Um, I, um, wasn't gonna talk about this today. I thought it would be more appropriate for the budget meeting on the 11th. But given that you raised the topic, I may as well. This, budgets are subject to, um, the opinions of many people coming together. I'm telling you what you all know. They work if you are willing to compromise. They fail if you're not. We unfortunately are living through a perfect example of that right now. The budget of 2012 turned out to be an excellent budget. It solved a number of problems we had been facing. We managed to reduce our expenses, both health, pension and salary. We rectified a funding balance that we were suffering through, and I mean literally suffering through, thanks to S and P. We utilized less of our surplus. We stabilized our surplus balances with growth in all three surplus accounts, something that was pointed out during this rather long session this morning into this afternoon. Um, I looked at a number of markers to determine, it's always nice to say, wouldn't it be great to take our budget down, our tax rate down, um, change in our tax rate down to zero? The question is, what would it get us? Well, it would probably get us a downgrade from S and P. They had, they were very explicit in February 2012 when they presented a report indicating that they did not like what we'd been doing for past years in terms of using surplus to keep our taxes down, albeit in retrospect, they really weren't very down. But nevertheless, that criticism was quite explicit. They implied, and I say that with a lot of care, they implied that a zero tax increase would be tantamount to sacrificing a AAA rating. Now, how much they would take us down and what market impact that would have, I don't know. But as you're aware, we are, we, we currently have outstanding, a significant amount of money that will be rolled over in August, and it will dramatically be affected by any change in our rating. There's no question about it. The difference between AAA and AA right now, on long-term debt's approximately 40 basis points. That's significant. When I looked at our tax rate of the last year and compared it to how we look in Ma, in Morris County, which I think is an appropriate way to look at it, if you array the 39 communities in Morris County, starting at the top, the most expensive effective tax rate, to the bottom, the least expensive tax rate, we come out 32 out of 39. Do we want to be 39? I don't know. Harding is 39. I think Harding's a ringer in this discussion, so I would say we're 32 out of 38. The difference between us and the two less expensive ones behind us is less than one-tenth of, of a percent. All right, you have to go at the second decimal points to find any significant difference. The impact of this budget increase that's been proposed, the 1.48% on our average home that we keep bringing up, our 17, our $718,000 property will be $39. I don't think $39 is something you throw away. But on the other hand, it is less than the rate of inflation as projected for the coming year, certainly less than it was in the previous year. And it represents the lowest increase in tax rates in this town since 2003. Can we get it lower? I certainly hope so. Is this the year to do it? I don't think so. We have too many outside pressures. One year does not a trend make. We turned around a very bad situation last year. I would suggest that we need to do that for at least another year or two before we're confident enough to lower tax rate to zero, tax rate increase to zero.
Thank you. Rob?
Thank you. You know, last year when we were doing the budget and we decided to actually speak to S and P, um, I believe, um, that it was a combination of the drawdown of surplus and the fact that we hadn't, you know, taxed, uh, we weren't at our maximum tax capacity. I don't know what the exact words were. That was concerning to them. So we worked very hard last year, uh, to stabilize the surplus budgets, as you mentioned. And I, I agree. I think we did a very good job. I think as the result of the past couple budgets, we're in a much better spot right now. Having said that, I mean, if, if we just look at, you know, the fact that there's $134,000 of revenue that we are not accounting for in the budget from the Health Department alone. So even if we want to keep 26,000 out, uh, for the fourth quarter payments and the $22,000 out from, from Medicaid, you know, that still puts us at approximately $90,000, roughly half of the tax increase. So just by applying contracts that we have and nothing else, we can cut that from 1.48% increase to 0.76%. So I don't see why we just don't do that. Um, furthermore, if we really, and I'm, I'm, I would love to have this discussion, um, you know, if we want to raise taxes by 2%, which is the statutory maximum, we can do that just by lowering our electric rates. Because I think really what got us into trouble was for years and years and years, we kept the tax rate artificially low and we, you know, we, we made money off of the electric company. And I don't think the average taxpayer in Madison cares whether he's paying out of his left pocket or his right pocket, one being taxes, one being electric rate. And I think it would be more fair for the average taxpayer if we, you know, if we really want to talk about it, to allow them to, to get their maximum federal deduction through an increase in local tax. So I think either we need to look at going all the way to 2% on the increase and cutting electric rates, okay? Or, um, we should at the very least apply the, the money that we know we're gonna get from the contracts, excluding Medicaid, to the revenue number this year. And this way, we still have a tax increase, but, you know, yeah, whatever, $37 here, $37 there. We haven't factored into or discussed the, the open space, which we're gonna do, I assume, at the next meeting. And to me, it just doesn't make a lot of sense not to apply all... And to me, it just doesn't make a lot of sense not to apply all the revenue that we know we're going to have in a conservative manner. So I would think that we can, you know, we should do that, at the very least. And I think this year's budget is a strong budget, and I'd like to thank the finance liaison and his assistant for the work they've done. We know how hard it is. I think we've done a good job this year, but I think we can tighten it up just a little bit, or, you know, let's really talk about the way we do it and make some changes. That's, thank you.
Thank you. I was told to speak into the mic, so I'll make sure I do it now. I'm very conservative by nature. If anybody knows how to run a volunteer organization in town, you have to be. What I won't do, and I never have, is count on money that I don't have yet, or that I'm not sure I'm going to get. Now, and I'm a taxpayer in this town like everybody else, so I'm not making any type of political statement right now. You know, I don't have that $718,000 house, mine is less, so the impact on me will be even less. We did have a good year this year, and like Ben said, you know, one year a trend does not make. There's still a lot of variables out there. You know, we all enjoy the services we have and we want to keep. You know, hell, I'm not sure if we're getting the money back for FEMA this year. There's no guarantee we're going to get that. We want to move up Vinton Road on the list and get that going. Well, heck, if we, you know, we start moving projects ahead, we have to be able to fund them. You know, 1.48% increase, you know, that's, well, it's less than the rate of inflation, that's true. Would I like it to be zero? Yeah, I would. But realistically, and we saw this last year when we came in at about 2%, whatever that number was, it kept us in pretty good shape this year. We were able to manage the town through pretty tough times. I don't want to cut my knees out from under me right now. And if next year, we're in a good position again, and you know, when those new electric contracts kick in, well, then maybe we can talk about it. But, you know, to do it right now, man, I'll tell you, you'd be putting yourself, you'll be boxing yourself in, and you're going to cut yourself short when you really need the money. That's it.
Let me just get people that haven't said anything, if anyone wants to say anything, I'll say something and then I'll go to bed. Carmella, did you want to ask if you wanted to say something?
You know, I understand, this isn't my first budget that I've sat through. I've listened to each one of the department heads go ahead and take another, and get another 5% off or 10% off, and they've been doing that for the last three or four years. I'm very happy with the operating budgets on all of these, or the spending plans as Robert likes to refer them. I've been pleased looking at them. And I understand Rob's point about, you know, the revenues, well, that's something we have to look at as far as accounting is concerned. But, you know, speaking for a revenue that's coming, you know, from one of the departments, you know, we're pretty sure what we have now. We anticipate maybe having three more, but I'm very conservative in that matter. I never spend the money I don't have. I learned that a long time ago. So, you know, I'm just pleased with this budget, you know, and I thank the two of you for spending a lot of time on it, and Jim and Ray making sure that everybody was relatively conservative this year. So I'm pleased with the budget, you know, the operating budget as it is. I think we have a little work to do on the capital now because we've had some suggestions. So, you know, I think that that's going to take the work because that's going to take the, you know, the money and, you know, for the new suggestions that were made today. So I would carefully look at that. But as far as the others concerned, I'm pleased with it. I'm a taxpayer like everybody else. You know, there's going to be other factors with the open space fund and whatever, the revaluation is going to come into play, we're going to be probably cutting that tax rate. So I'm pretty pleased at what is going to happen in this next year.
Astrid?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I found it very interesting to hear the proposals made by Rob and what Ben's proposed. And I think, though, that I go with Mr. Landergin in being conservative at this point. Did a good job last year, let's continue it, let's be prudent, let's be conservative, and stick with the motion as proposed.
And I'll just, two quick things. One, I'll be looking at Robert, so you can shake your head or nod your head if I'm off-base. But if we underestimate fees that are coming in, revenue from other sources, and we collect that money, that goes into prior-year surplus, so, for the next year. So as we look at this year's budget, we have that prior-year surplus of 2.975. That includes any money we might have been too conservative on fees collected. And so if we scale back and go super-conservative or not super-conservative and fully budget all the potential revenue, that number shrinks for next year, so it's really a one-year pop and could put extra pressure in future years. All I need is for you to say, Mayor, you're on target or you're, you've been here too, okay, thank you. The second one, which we've already committed to reviewing, the rate structure of both electric and water, one of the things we do have to keep in mind, property taxes are deductible, but not dollar-to-dollar, you know, so if you conservatively decide, you know, I'm going to push my air conditioning up to 74 degrees instead of 68 or whatever it is, every dollar you save goes direct in your pocket as opposed to dollar you might save in that electric reduction and pay more in property taxes. Not everyone does a law and form for tax deductions, there are a lot of rental properties in town. So a lot of that doesn't quite translate to every resident. So we do, I hear the understanding about property taxes deductible, electric isn't, but it doesn't, you have complete control over your electric, you don't have control over your property taxes.
If it's going to be deductible next year, we don't even know, right?
Right, which is a good point, so. All right, unless there's any other?
Can I just want to make sure I made my point clear, okay? After listening to everyone's rebuttal, if you will call that, I am not saying that we're asking, that I'm asking us to count on money we don't have. I'm not asking us to use additional surplus to affect our S&amp;P rating. That wasn't part of what I'm saying. Also, I am not asking us to adjust any spending. I guess, you know, I agree with everybody that the spending plan this year, it's good. All I'm saying here is, just like what the mayor said, last year, we under-budgeted our revenue by approximately $1.2 million. All I'm asking us to do is to take a look at those revenue numbers that we put in for 2013 to reflect more of the actual amount. It's a very small amount that we need to adjust to give taxpayer a break. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the, okay, we got one more comment?
No, I just, I mean, we can obviously go back and forth all day, but I just want to point out that it's, the $200,000, if we get to a point where we are solvent because of that $200,000 increase, we're in terrible shape, right? That's not at all the objective. I don't think Madison's going to be $200,000 away from finding itself having to go out for emergency taxes. What I am concerned about is that we don't have the pattern that the capital markets would look for in order to feel comfortable with an entity actually taking control over its finances. Now, you might say, do you have to charge the average resident 39 bucks to get there? No, that's only one piece of what you seem to like as being a much larger and complicated pie. Could we get it to zero? Yes, we could get it to zero. All we're saying is that I think the risk of doing that, not only in terms of the flexibility it takes away from us, not only for this year but for future years, and the implications for a rating and subsequent increase in expenses for funding, just don't make it worthwhile today. If this were two years from now and we saw the same pattern, I'd be on your camp 100%. Just not there today.
So, and I think we're about ready for, but Rob?
I think it's a very, we can fix it very easily. Why don't we just ask S&amp;P? Why don't we just show them how the accounts look? Why don't we just say, you know, we're thinking about doing this, you know, we're under-budgeting revenue that we have signed contracts for, would it make a difference? And if they agree and back up, you know, Ben's last statement, then we leave it as-is. If not, you know, why not just, you know, again, we're talking about contracts that are signed contracts, not including Medicaid, not including the fourth quarter money we expect.
I just, to make one thing clear, S&amp;P's the last people I would like to have bring us around, right? I've got a record in very public places about what S&amp;P did during 2006, '07, and '08. What I'm concerned about is they have a point. This town was, in fact, overspending.
Totally agree, that's why I ran.
So all I'm saying is we're getting that under control. We're getting that under control. Let's get a record of having turned the corner. I don't think one year is a record.
Okay, I'm going to just cut this, we have several steps to get through. This is just a motion to instruct Robert to send this budget to the state as we're not in a self-examination year. In order to stay on target, we have to give the blessing today so we can have the introduction on March 11th with final here on April 8th, correct? Or is it April? Yeah, if everything comes back. So we have a motion to instruct Robert to go ahead and follow through with that, so we can have the roll call vote on that, please.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
I'm sorry, the motion was?
This is the motion to instruct Robert to...
Would you like me to read it?
Yeah, thank you.
This is a motion whereby we direct Robert Califford to work with the borough's auditor to draft the budget as presented for introduction at the Borough Council meeting scheduled for March 11, 2013.
I have a question about that. Are we going to receive the legal size package prior to the council meeting for us to review?
I don't believe so. And this is a very fast turnaround. I've got to get to the auditor by Wednesday.
We'll do, you know, we'll get as much out as...
It would be nice to have the material to review prior to the introduction. It's kind of hard to look at the material when we need to make a decision.
Obviously, we're in a, we have a big role and we should have all the information possible.
And I'm assuming that we direct, the motion was to direct Robert without further making any adjustments?
Correct. Roll call vote here.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
No.
Mr. Cattellinello?
No.
Mr. Landergin?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wokowitz?
Yes.
Thank you. Move on to invitation, public comment?
Mayor, I need clarification of a couple of items.
Okay, clarification from the full cap.
For Capitol?
Yep.
Improvements to the impound yard is 20, purchase of the undercover vehicles 42, and air purification system is five.
Correct, yes.
And what is the status of, with council, with regards to the study to replace the HVAC and baseboard? Is that included or is that excluded?
I think we left that in there with instructions that we want to see that, we think that's a high number, but as for budgeting purposes, it's in there. The $5,000 for the parking lot is not.
That's the only item to be removed.
Yep.
All right. Lastly, and the budget document dated January 29th that you have in front of you, and I have to bring this up, Jim, that reflects a funding for the library of $1,258,850. The state in writing has a minimum contribution excluding the electric of $1,181,517. If we add electric for $110,000, that would be an increase of about $32,000. I can find other adjustments to offset that.
I think the instructions are, the bottom line is not going to change.
Correct. Okay. So the property taxes would be under this plan, $13,636,696, an increase of $99,488 or 1.48%.
Yep.
Percent.
Rob?
Will we discuss publicly the open space tax prior to introduction of the budget?
It doesn't need to be tied to the budget, so it would be a separate conversation.
I see.
I don't, because the timing of meetings with our fundraising partners who, we're not going to be able to have any until March 11th, but I'm certainly hoping that we will have some March 25th.
I understand, thank you.
Mayor, I'm not so sure that's true because in the budget document, we actually included the tax rate for open space tax. Is that correct?
Not in the, in the budget document, but it has nothing to do with the municipal portion. Open space is separate from municipal portion.
But once we submit that budget document to the state, that 2% is included in our document, correct?
No, it is not.
The legal size document?
It is reflected at 2 cents, but what you're approving, what you're approving is the tax levy of 136, of 13 millions.
So what you're saying is we can, since that's not part of the approval process, this go-around, we can delay that decision?
Of course, yes, of course.
To some other time?
But, but you don't have a lot...
When do we need to decide that, though?
I will tell you when, Jeanne. I'm going to be, in the first meeting of June, I'm going to have an agenda recommendation to do the estimated third quarter tax bill, tax rate. We're not going to wait on that. This will be the third or fourth consecutive year that we do that. And that's done to avoid a delay by the state, which would delay the tax bills. In the past, we had the financial capacity to delay sending out the third and fourth quarter tax bills along with the first and second quarter of the succeeding year, but we no longer have that luxury. So you should come to a decision no later, no later than probably the first meeting in May.
That certainly would be, target should be much sooner than that.
Yeah.
All right, now I open this up to anyone in the public to wishing to comment on anything, and your comments at three minutes or less.
Pat Rowe, 25 High Now for the last time today, but not for the future. I think the final conversation you had here tonight just crystallizes for me the fact that in many respects, we do need a real five-year plan for a lot of these moving parts that we have. I think, you know, I respect Bob's opinion about, I don't want to spend money I don't have, but technically, we're spending money right now that we can't guarantee. You don't know that the tax bill is going to come in every quarter from every person in town. We do have to take some things on faith, there are confidence levels that you have to assign to certain things. And I think when it comes to things like electric utility, you're going to have a fairly confident amount of faith. I mean, you do every year anyway because otherwise you couldn't pay the bill. So I think the sooner we do that, the better off we are because I think it'll help minimize some of the discussions about, you know, should it be one and a half, should it be zero, should it be two? Because all that comes out of that type of discussion. And I think it gives all councils in the future guidance about where you want to set target levels for your surplus accounts. How high do you want them, how low do you want them? It's in conjunction with things like S&amp;P who influence your borrowing rate or borrowing rate. But I think having sort of a roadmap for the future financially would be a tremendous help to the entire council as you do subsequent budget years. So it really would depress upon you, the final time today, but not for the future, that particular piece of information.
And like, so we're hoping...
Sorry, I thought you were going to say something.
Yeah, actually, just try to avoid the, right now it's just comments. We're working on strategic planning process.
You know, I understand that. I ask a lot of questions, I give you guys a lot of guidance. But I really appreciate the effort that you guys put in and the time, more than anybody probably knows what that takes. And so I just want to thank you. I think it is a very solid budget. I've pointed out the issues with the surplus in the past, I think it's finally in a good place. And I congratulate everybody who's worked on that and the electric utility work that will help us in the future. So, you know, don't take my comments and my questions as negative, they're just hopefully to help you guys. Thank you.
Take him as a concerned citizen, that is very helpful.
That's right.
Hi, I'm Carol Cowan of 5 Christina Court, and I just want to comment based on listening to your discussion on property taxes, et cetera. With the change in valuations that you know has happened, and it's been 40 to 70% for a number of people, we actually have no idea where we stand on property taxes. And there's a real concern that based on what we currently have as our tax bills, we just take our valuation and calculate that. So I think when you can come out with better clarity to the community, it'll make people So I think when you can come out with better clarity to the community, it'll make people feel a lot more comfortable. That's what's going to happen.
We were planning on a, originally, we were hoping for March 11th for a presentation on the reval process, and what the appraisers, what came out, and where shifts were, timing-wise, and for a good presentation, and not to confuse it with the introduction of the budget, we're looking at March 25th for that. But keep in mind, the, as I've often said, we raise the same amount of money before reevaluation as we do it after reevaluation, there is slight shifts, from what we've seen so far, the shifts were very small compared to what other towns have seen. So, yes, it's a variable, but it's not, we don't see it any drastic.
Thank you. I don't have to go move.
Right, no. Anyone else in the public wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the agenda, and ask Ben to.
Yes, I have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you all for dedication. All right, now it's time for my town meeting format. It's time to go to the lawn care thing. That's, yeah.